I call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you call the roll call, please.
Jim Harris, Lucas Steele, Michael Gordon, Doug Hardy.
Here.
Susanna Ballard.
Here.
John Kandig.
Here.
Dan McGowan.
Here.
Chad Nelson.
Here.
Donald Bergen.
I hear.
Danny White.
Here.
Okay, we have the minutes of the previous meeting. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Do I hear a motion to receive the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I second it.
All in favor of approving the minutes? Okay. Correspondence and announcements from staff.
Did we finish the vote?
I thought we did. All votes in favor of the minutes?
Did we get it?
No, there's not. Are we voting?
Does that do it?
All right, so we have the vote.
Okay, motion passed.
Before we go to correspondence, can we just do a quick, and it doesn't have to be electronic, but a quick motion. Because our Chair and our Vice Chair are gone today, we actually need a motion to appoint somebody to actually chair the meeting. Mr. Bergen has experience and has done it before, so of course, staff would recommend that Mr. Bergen do it, but I do, for formalities, need someone to make a motion in a second and then to approve that.
I make a motion for Mr. Bergen to be the Chairperson for the meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
The verbal's enough?
Well, it's fine, thank you.
Okay, fine.
Okay, now with regard to correspondence and announcements.
Yes.
I have a couple. The first, each one of you should have before you a packet from the City Clerk's office and its revisions to your Board, Committee, Commission Member Handbook. Just take those with you. When you leave, you can read through those later, some, just some minor changes. And then the second announcement, I'd like to take a minute to recognize and thank Mr. John Kandig for his years of service. His term will expire on July 1st, as the terms typically do, and he's decided that not to renew his term, and so I'm going to give him this little certificate. If we need to see it on the camera. I don't know which camera angle it is, but here you go. Here you go.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for your years of service.
You bet. Thank you.
All right, and that is all I have for correspondence and announcements.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. The structure of the meeting will allow the staff to present an item. The Commission may ask staff questions, and then the applicant will have an opportunity to present. The Commissioners may have questions for the applicant, and then I will open the discussion to the audience. We ask that if you would like to address the Commission, please do so, but there is a limit of one trip to the podium per topic and three minutes to speak. I would then close the discussion and bring the item back to staff and ask for their recommendation. The Commission will then hear a motion, discuss, and make a recommendation to the City Council for their final consideration. The first item today is item number 19-2016, Request to Approve Conditional Use Permit 19-00300004, to allow an open storage yard at tract 2307, block 4, lot 5, 2090, Kiowa Boulevard North, in the C2 General Commercial District.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property located generally in the northern part of the community, east of Highway 95, you can see here within the circle. Here's the subject property. Some of you may remember, just as recently as 2018, all these vacant parcels along here at one time were part of a planned development. We rezoned those basically just back to C2, which was the zoning district prior to the planned development being approved. This is one of the property owners, obviously, coming forward, asking to develop that site as an open storage yard. In the C2 District, open storage yards require a conditional use permit, which is approvable by the Commission. Here's the site plan for the application. You can see they just proposed a perimeter fence, basically a gate, entrance, and the locations of things to be stored or parked on the site. We have not... Do we have technical difficulties again?
Yes, moment.
That way you could just switch. If you want to see what he's doing up there, you just switch this over here. So now you're seeing what he's saying.
That's what I did. I couldn't move. Okay. All right. Okay.
All right, you got it fixed?
Yes.
Okay. And this is the site plan proposed by the applicant once again, just indicating where they're going to store things. In your staff report, there's an analysis that has been performed by staff indicating that the... We have not gone through formal design review at this point, which ends up being a condition of approval ultimately, but as you're aware, especially in these scenarios where open storage, the code deals with those by requiring additional setbacks, additional landscaping, and sometimes even some other separation issues with regard to open storage typically. And those will be reviewed during the design review comment or stages. That concludes my portion of the presentation. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Any questions for staff at this point?
Stu has a question. With final approval, will you require a sidewalk or driveway?
If... Generally speaking, yes, off-site improvements will be required. They're traditionally required depending on what the location is, what street it is. It may include street widening, may include curb, may include sidewalk. Some locations have it, some don't. So unless, you know, until we go through that specific review process, I won't be able to tell you, but yes, traditionally, off-site improvements are required.
Okay, I just, I would hate to see... I know one got approved a year and a half ago on a coma, and it was for a riffers. There were no improvements required, so basically, if you drive by there, they just drive over the curb, so there's a bunch of dirt in the street, and without a drive being there, you know, someone could actually park and block the business owner's access, so...
Okay.
Those are a couple of my concerns.
I'll tell you what, after the meeting, let me know more specifically that location, if not the address, and I can look into that and figure out what happened.
Stuart, could you... What is the current or anticipated use of the properties on either side of this property?
At this point, I have not heard anything from the adjacent owners, not with regard to any objection to this or anything, and so I have not had the opportunity to discuss that with them. I don't know what their intent is. They may be here in the audience, you know, possibly to state that, but I don't know. All I can suggest is that it would be something that would be allowed in a C2 District.
Okay, is the applicant present? Would you please come to the podium, spell your last name, and present the item?
My name's James Gagnon, last name is G-A-G-N-O-N. Do you have any questions for me?
Do you have anything you wish to present?
I had already planned to develop the front of the property with a sidewalk and a driveway, so that was already in the plans. There is going to be a block wall, decorative block wall in the front with some desert landscaping there to make the frontage look, you know, acceptable to the city. And there's no plans to pave the property in any way. It's just basically an investment property. I just wanted to have it make a little income while it sits there.
Okay, are there any questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, I open it for public hearing. Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this item? If so, spell your last name for the record. Hearing nobody, I will close public hearing. Bring the item back to the staff for recommendation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The staff finds that the proposed conditional use permit meets all the requirements set forth in 140504G. Based on those findings, the Development Review Committee recommends that Land Use Action 19 to 2016 be approved with the following conditions. Condition number one, design review shall be completed prior to the issuance of a grading permit or any site improvements. And number two, a NOCs key switch on the electric gate shall be provided for the fire department. And that concludes my conditions.
Thank you. On this particular item, I do have concerns. Immediately to the rear of this property is a church. Alongside of the church is an apartment. To the other side of the church is another vacant residential lot. So we're talking about backing up to residential. I do not think that this would be a good idea for open storage next to residential. Well, you're talking about noise and possibly odor, maybe even at night, and I do not feel this is a good use of this particular land in this case. Are there other comments from the Commissioners?
I have one comment. It was stated that there was no plans to pave the property, so it would be basically a dirt lot. My concern is traffic over a dirt lot with the church and a residential behind it would probably not be the best use of that property unless it was paved to cut down some of the
Okay, we are at the Commission then for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ID 19-2016, Request to Approve Conditional Use Permit Number 19-0030004, to allow open storage yard at tract 2307, block 4, lot 5, 2090, Kiowa Boulevard North, in the C2 General Commercial District, with the following additional conditions, that a sidewalk and driveway be installed, and a decorative block wall be installed with conforming to the city's landscaping requirements.
Do we have a second to the recommendation?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the item.
Did we get the vote?
Motion passes four to three.
Okay, all right. Moving on to the second item.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Stuart, were any of those requirements in the motion more than what had previously been discussed with the applicant?
Yes, the two additional conditions were not. Well, the condition that requires the sidewalk and the driveway entrance is going to be required anyway as a result of our...
Yes.
...review. And the additional condition that had to do with the fence or the wall, if you will, is something that's going to be addressed through design review, and the way he stated it, that it meets the code requirements...
Okay.
...is fine.
Moving on to item number two, which is ID 99-2014, A Request for a Preliminary Subdivision Plat for Esperanza Condo Plant of Tract 2252, Block 3, Lot 7, 490, North Lake Havasu Avenue, creating 18 residential condominiums, a storage unit, a pool house, and a covered parking.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Properties located on Lake Havasu Avenue, basically between Palaverde and Industrial Boulevard. This is the subject property, just south of the Wash and on the east side of Lake Havasu Here's the preliminary plat for your consideration. As you indicated, it's about eight, or .85 acres, zone multifamily. There have been permits pulled for the property already. It's, I don't know that it's under construction, but I know grading permits have been issued and building permits are in as well. It's basically just a condominium plat for the 18 units. You can see here the pool area, pool house, and then these, the garages for each of the units. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions for the staff? Okay. Is the applicant present? Would you please spell your last name for the record and present your, what you wish to present?
Lee Johnson, J-O-H-N-S-O-N, with APL Surveying. Like staff said, it's an 18-unit condominium project that has just broke ground. Each one of the units will have their own separate garages and a amenity, pool, and pool house. That's basically the sum of the project. I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
Questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
I would open public hearing at this point to the audience. If anyone wishes to spell, if anyone wishes to speak from the audience. Okay, hearing no one, I would close public hearing. Bring the item back to the staff. No, we don't, not ready for that yet.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Staff finds the proposed subdivision meets all the requirements set forth in Title 13. Therefore, based on those findings, the Development Review Committee recommends that Land Use Action 192014, the preliminary plat for Esperanza Condos be approved.
Okay, again, any questions that you want to staff or discussion here by the members on this item?
I think it looks like a great project. We need more projects like this in Havasu. That's all the discussion that I have.
I just wanted to state this was, like the first item, I did not see any kind of a sign whatsoever.
On plats, we, on preliminary plats for condominiums, we don't traditionally mark the location. It is, it is just a different mechanism for ownership in this case.
Oh, okay.
The project's been approved, the grading permit's been approved, it's been through design review as well as building permit review, so really, the only thing you're approving is whether or not people can rent these or own these, is basically what it comes down to.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Again, is there any comment, any discussion from the Commission at this point? If not, I will ask for a motion at this point. Motion for approval, please.
I'll make a motion to approve ID 19-2014, A Request for a Preliminary Plat Subdivision Plat for Esperanza Condos, Plat of Tract 2252, Block 3, Lot 7, 490, North Lake Havasu Avenue, creating 18 residential condominiums, a storage unit, a pool house, and covered parking with staff's recommendations.
I second them.
Motion made by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Ms. Ballard. Place your votes, please.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to the third item. The third item is ID 19-2015, Request for a Preliminary Subdivision Plat for a replat of the shops at Lake Havasu City, Tract 2396A, at 5601 Highway 95 North, creating 10 lots and a common parcel A. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property lies just west of the Lake Havasu City Airport on the, in the northern part of the community. We should all be pretty familiar with this property as we just dealt with it the last couple Planning Commission meetings. Here's the mall as we see it from the air. This is very similar to the last item, yes? Oh, I'm sorry, we have a... Stepping down for a conflict.
Okay, Mr. White is recruiting himself.
All right. So for those remaining, this is a copy of the proposed plat. The 10 new parcels are in color here. Little bit difficult to see or determine without having the aerial photo on, so we'll go with, we'll go with this one. It's a little easier to describe. The majority of the parcels are just as a result of existing buildings. You can see here the roofs of the buildings, obviously, the majority of these sites, with the exception of a couple. One here is a vacant lot, basically with some parking included in it. And then here, obviously, a larger parcel, which according to the original mall plan contained two building pads, which in this case now would be one building pad, and a good portion of parking to go along with that particular piece of property. And that concludes my portion of the presentation. If you have any questions?
Any questions of staff?
Stu, I have a question for the audience and for those watching. May I point out where the movie theater is, just for... I don't think they can see your arrow on TV.
You can't see my arrow on TV? That little thing moving?
Can you? Okay.
Okay, so this is...
So I just wanted the audience and the people on TV to be able to know where...
How about Walmart?
Which buildings are which. Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, this is Walmart. I think they're labeled there actually, but they are hard to read. So, yes, this is, this is the movie theater. Walmart, what, is it Dillard's? This is Dillard's? So just so you get a concept of where we are at within the mall.
My other question is, in this, are we, the parking lot's going to stay the same in Lot 8, 9? It's just...
Correct.
That's not going to be...
The major parking lot is still going to be common as parcel A, and I'm sure there are other agreements in place that discuss the portions and what rights individual businesses have to those property, to those parking areas. That's something you may want to ask applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Stu, when you're looking at this, do you, did you see any kind of feeling of any kind of problem with the existing businesses?
I do not. Really, all this is doing is creating the separation of each... Really, all this is doing is creating the separation of each building, giving each, someone the opportunity to own the buildings. There was one concern expressed when we went through our review process, and you'll see that as part of your conditions. And it has to do specifically with Walmart relative to this new building here, the property line. There's some separation requirements that as a result of putting a property line right here, you're not meeting those separation requirements, and we have that building code provision within your conditions.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Would you please come forward for your presentation? Please spell your last name for the record.
Lee Johnson, J-O-H-N-S-O-N, with APL surveying again. Hey, Stu, can you go back to the prior picture for a second?
There you go.
Okay. Little history on this, when the mall was first developed, it was actually developed into like four parcels. You had the Walmart parcel, the Dillard's parcel, the JCPenney's parcel, and then the overall. And then a year or two ago, we came forward in front of the commission, city council, and broke out three individual parcels, which was the movie theater parcel has its own, that way they could have their own ownership. And then the three larger box stores up front that has PetSmart and whichever other two stores are in there. And then on the opposite side of JCPenney's over there, where the Hair Place and Beauty Places broke those out. And now the developer is coming back forward to break out the rest of the buildings on individual sites where they can end up having individual ownership for the buildings. So you have eight existing buildings out there, and the two out parcels is Stu described. And then parcel A is still your overall common parking for the entire project. So that's basically some of the project, and I'll try to answer any questions you have.
That was my only question, Lee, was that the parking is going to stay parking, correct?
Yeah, the parking is going to stay parking. On the overall, there was a, like any parking and common plan, a reduction of parking of the overall due to parking and common and shared agreement. And if any, especially on the larger out parcel, parcel A, if they tried to make a larger pad, the city would still require us to make sure we maintained the overall parking requirement in the number of stalls. And I think when we ran that, I didn't run it on this, this go, but I think I did that a couple years ago when I did the others, and there was only a few parking stalls that could disappear. So there's not a whole heck of a lot of parking stalls that could be removed per code.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you.
All right, thanks, Commissioners.
At this time, I would open it for public hearing. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Please, please spell your last name for the record.
Hunter, H-U-N-T-E-R. And my first name is Deborah, D-E-B-R-A. But I'm a frequent shopper at Dillard's, and nobody, the parking lot's always empty. So I think that would actually help Dillard's business to bring another place. And then women were like, I know myself, I'm a, I go into a store for one item and I come out with 40. So, you know, if it's convenient up there, I think it would help the whole mall. I think it sounds like a good project. But I'm a snowbird from North Dakota, so my opinion does probably not count, so.
Welcome. Keep coming back.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I guess it is time for the staff recommendation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff finds the proposed subdivision meets all the requirements of Title 13. Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends that Land Use Action 192015 for a preliminary plat of the replat of the shops of Lake Havasu City, tract 2396A, creating 10 lots and a common parcel A with the following conditions. Condition number one, that a building code compliance covenant be placed on the dedication page of the final plat to read as follows. Building code compliance covenant, provisions for the open mall buildings and anchor buildings shall be maintained as required by the International Building Code, shall be maintained around the open mall building and anchor buildings. One-hour fire barriers are required between all tenant spaces in all buildings due to a reduction of the required 60-foot yard. This reduction occurred in building J, which is located on lot B3.
Thank you. Any further questions to staff at this point? If not, we are at the commission here for discussion and a motion.
I move to approve Land Use Action ID number 19-2015, approving a preliminary plat for a replat of the shops at Lake Havasu City, tract 2396A at 5601 Highway 95 North, creating 10 lots and a common parcel A with the following condition, or with staff's recommendations.
I'll second the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Nelson and Mr. Kendrick, did you second it?
I did, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Kendrick seconded the motion. There's no more discussion. All those in favor?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Mr. Nelson, can I ask you to amend your motion? Because this one isn't typically, it's not spelled out in your suggested motion, like staff recommendations, there's a condition on it with the building code compliance covenant. Can you amend your motion to specifically include that covenant?
Absolutely. I move to approve Land Use Action ID number 19-2015, approving a preliminary plat for a replat of the shops at Lake Havasu City, tract 2396A at 5601 Highway 95 North, creating 10 lots and a common parcel A with the following condition. A building code compliance covenant be placed on the dedication page of the final plat to read as follows. Building code compliance covenant, provisions for mall buildings and anchor buildings shall be maintained as required by the International Building Code. A 60-foot yard as defined in the International Building Code shall be maintained around the open mall building and anchor buildings. One-hour fire barriers are required between all tenant spaces in all buildings due to a reduction of the required 60-foot yard. This reduction occurred at building J, which is located on lot B3.
Thank you. And just for the record to clarify, it's an amendment to his motion.
Thank you.
We need an approval to the amendment.
Yeah, Mr. Kendrick, do you second again?
I'll second again, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have the amendment, that we have the motion as approved. Is there any further discussion? If not, place your votes, please.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. At this point, we have the call to the public. Does anyone in the public wish to speak at this point? Okay, seeing none, I would close that. Future meetings?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As pointed out by Commission Member McGowan earlier, your next meeting, which would have been June 19th, I don't have any cases for it. And as customary, the July 3rd Planning Commission will be canceled just because of its proximity to July 4th, the holiday. We traditionally have a difficult time getting people here. And so with that, your next regularly scheduled meeting will be July 17th.
Thank you. In, in closing, I just want to say that John Kendrick is retiring from the commission as of today. And he was presented by Mrs. Schelling, by the certificate. And he has been many years, many terms on this commission, and I have been there with him many times. And I also personally want to thank John for his time and his effort on this commission.
And I would like to thank all of you, if my voice holds after this. I've enjoyed being on it, but I'd like to see some younger people apply for these openings now.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.